Hey everyone, welcome to our 12 session for our intimacy series with He and Rose Bible Study. We're glad to have you this evening and we'd like to continue to study and get to know the Lord Jesus Christ through His word. And so this evening we'll be studying Luke chapter 12 and we'll be discussing exactly what we have been learning about Jesus and what His call is like, what is it like to follow Jesus? What is it like to receive Him into our lives and what are the things that He would ask us to do? And so we're gonna go ahead, we're gonna start with a word of prayer and then we'll get started. Father God, we thank you so much for all that you've done. We thank you for your many blessings, we thank you for your Holy Spirit and we thank you for a brand new year where we get to celebrate your presence and dwell in your presence, oh God. And we ask that your Holy Spirit takes control, Lord, that you would be the one to lead out and to help us to understand and give us wisdom for this study. In Jesus's name we pray, amen. Alright, so guys, let's get ready, let's get started. So Luke chapter 12 is exactly where we're gonna get started today. And we start off with a section that is talking about beware of hypocrisy. What is hypocrisy? Hypocrisy is basically someone who says they are one thing, but they're doing something different. And so I'll quickly read verses 1 to 3. "In the meantime, when an innumerable multitude of people had gathered together so that they trampled one another, he began to say to his disciples, first of all, 'Beware of the leaven of the Pharisees, which is hypocrisy; for there is nothing covered that will not be revealed, nor hidden that will not be known.'" And we know that the, the study that we did prior and the week before, we learned how the Pharisees were accusing Jesus of what he was doing wrong, which he wasn't doing wrong. The Pharisees and the lawyers and all the scribes and all the people that were educated were accusing Jesus Christ of not following the law and not following the ways that they should be doing. So, sorry, we're gonna block this person. So basically, at this time, Jesus is trying to let these people know, you can dress up, you can do all these things, you can say all these things, but if you're not practicing what you're preaching, you're a hypocrite. And so he's saying to these disciples to beware of people that are saying that they are following Jesus Christ, but they're not actually following Jesus. Beware of the people that say that they are the doers of the word, but they're not actually doing it. And so verse 3 continues to say, "Therefore, whatever you have spoken in the dark will be heard in the light; and what you have spoken in the ear and inner rooms will be proclaimed on the house steps." So basically what Jesus is trying to say is whatever's done in the dark will come to the light. So if you try to say that you're my follower and your actions and your fruits don't reflect that, that will manifest. People will figure it out, people will see it, people will hear it, and everything will be revealed. And next Jesus talks about teaching the fear of God. And so we go into verses 4 to 7 and here Jesus is saying, "I say to you, my friends, do not be afraid of those who kill the body, and after that have no more than they can do; but I will show you whom you should fear: fear him, who after he has killed has the power to cast into hell. Yes, I say to you, fear him." Jesus is saying, "Don't be afraid of men on earth, Pharisees, Sadducees, educated people, people who have power to remove your life, people that can threaten you with words, or people, period, because they don't have the power to give you eternal life. They don't have salvation at their, at the palm of their hands. Jesus Christ, God in heaven, He has the power and He is whom we should fear. We should never fear anyone on this earth." And Jesus says, "Are you not, are not five sparrows sold for two copper coins? And not one of them is forgotten before God, but the very hairs of your head are all numbered; do not fear. Therefore, you are of more value than many sparrows." So Jesus is saying to them, "Don't worry about your life, or if you follow me, what people will do to you. Worry about me, worry about getting closer to me." He's saying, "Don't worry about the minute little things, know that I will protect you. I know how many hairs, how many hairs are on your head. I know everything about you and no one will touch you, because you belong to me and I am in charge of you." And so, when you continued in the chapter, we talked about confessing Christ before men. And so Jesus continues from verses 8 unto 12. When you read the verses, you'll see that Jesus is saying that anyone who denies Him before men, meaning if you say you're a follower of Jesus Christ, and after you say that you're a follower of Jesus Christ behind closed doors in your prayer closet and you're around people, you deny it and you say, when he's in your face, or when he's, when you're around people, when you're around people, rather, your friends, or maybe people that don't know that you're a follower of Christ, you say, "Oh, I don't know Him, I don't, I don't pray, I don't do those things." He's saying that before, "But he who denies me before men, they will be denied before the angels of God." So if we deny Jesus, now we don't say, we say that we follow Him, but when we're around people, "Oh, I don't, I'm not a Christian, I don't go to church, that's not my life." If you deny Christ, He will deny you in front of the angels of God. So when He comes back, He's gonna deny you, He will deny me if we deny Him. And He says, "And anyone who speaks a word against the Son of Man, if we speak a word against Jesus, it will be forgiven him; but to him who blasphemes against the Holy Spirit, it will not be forgiven." So the Holy Spirit is, is a power that lives within us, is God who lives within us. It is the Spirit that flows and does the great things of God. And so if we, if the Holy Spirit is nudging at us and trying to get us to do something and we continue to disobey that Holy Spirit, at some point at the end of our lives, we will have to take account for what has been done. If we have disobeyed God, if we don't want Him, we deny Jesus, we say, "I don't wanna be saved, I don't wanna hear what you gotta say about Jesus," that is a sin that is unpardonable and will not be forgiven. But the Holy Spirit, and Jesus also continues in 11 and 12, and He's saying, if you, there's gonna be moments when you have to defend your beliefs, your faith, and you have to stand in front of people and actually say, "Why you believe in Jesus? What is it that, why is it that you follow Him?" And you'll be, as mandates, and there's gonna be issues and you have to answer. And Jesus is saying, "The Holy Spirit will teach you in that time, that very hour, what you have to say. So don't even worry about defending yourself, because I will be what will defend you. The Holy Spirit, the power within you, will defend you at that moment." Continuing on from 13 to 21, "A parable was given about a rich fool." And in the parable, Jesus says to them, "Man, who made me a judge or an arbitrator over you?" And this is what Jesus is saying to a man who, at this time, goes to Jesus because his brother won't share his inheritance. And so he wants his peace, he wants his portion, and the brother won't share it with him. And so Jesus is saying, "Who made me the judge and who made me arbitrator over you? I can't make that decision for you." And then He says to him, "Take heed and beware of covetousness; for one's life does not consist in the abundance of things he possesses." So what Jesus is telling him is, "Be careful what you're thinking about. What are the reasonings behind you even wanting the inheritance to begin with? You might wanna be careful and think about why you wanna possess, or why you wanna have abundant." And He's saying to be careful, because the things that you possess in life, the things that you have, the things that you see, are not what is important and is not what you should take heed of. And then the, uh, Jesus tells a parable about a certain man who was a rich man. He yielded a lot and he thought within himself, saying, "What shall I do, since I have no room to store my crops?" So this rich man, he basically builds a barn. He was rich, he had all the money in the world, let's say. And so he, he sees that he has a barn, he has everything he needs, and he's like, "You know what? This isn't enough, let me tear down what I have so I can build something bigger and then store everything I have in there." That's insane. So Jesus is saying, "It's ridiculous that you would do something like that. You would go and build a bigger barn to store up more." And Jesus says, "You fool, this night your soul will be required of you, then those who, then those will, excuse me, then whose will those things be, hmm, which you have provided." So everything within that, that place where you stored after you die, who's gonna have it now? You stored it up for yourself, now you're dead, who's gonna take possession of it? So he, so is he who lays treasure up for himself and is not rich toward God. So this is how Jesus or God sees us when we wanna store up, we wanna, you know, continue to have all the money in the world and we wanna go after the things of this world, but we're not worried about what He wants us to do with that money. And the rest of the chapter continues to go into that a little bit more. From verses 22 all the way down to verses 29, Jesus talks about why we shouldn't worry and the importance of understanding that He, He really keeps track of every little detail of our lives, from the hairs on our heads, from the, the mere little, you know, blemishes or a little spot, blackhead, wrinkle, whatever on you, He knows about it before you even thought about it. And so Jesus is saying at this moment, "Don't worry about anything." And He's saying, "Life is more than food and the body is more than clothing." And He says, "Consider the ravens, for they neither sow, they don't sow into any ministry, and they don't reap, which have neither storehouse, they don't have a storehouse or barns, and God feeds them. Of how much more value are you than the birds?" So why are we gonna kill ourselves for things when even the birds in the air, and these are animals, and they don't store anything, they get fed every single day, they get everything they need, and they don't store anything up? And Jesus is saying, "Why should we worry if they're being fed?" He says, "And why, and which of you by worrying can add one cubic to his stature? If you then are not able to do the least, why are you anxious for the rest?" So anxiety, worry, when we're so caught up in what the next day is gonna, is gonna be, or what are we gonna have the provision necessary? God is saying, "Do not worry." And He says, "Consider the lilies, how they grow, they neither toil nor spin; and yet I say to you, even Solomon, in all his glory, was not arrayed like one of these. Even the flowers and the way that they grow and the beauty of them, each and every one of them, they don't worry, they don't toil, and they don't spin. They don't lose control, they just grow." And so God is saying that we need to do the same today. And He's saying, "If God so clothes the grass, which today is in the field and tomorrow is thrown into the oven, how much more will He clothe you, oh you of little faith? And do not seek what you should eat, or what you should drink, nor have an anxious mind; for all these things the nations of the world seek after, and your Father knows that you need these things; but seek the kingdom of God, and all these things shall be added to you." So what God is saying here is that if we seek His kingdom, if we seek to enlarge His kingdom and we seek to do His will, we seek to do His work, we seek to look more like Him, and we look after Jesus, because the kingdom of God is Jesus Christ, who is what, what we wanna take a hold of, a relationship with Him in person, in heaven. So if we're going after that, we need not worry of anything, because Jesus Himself will add everything we need. All we have to do is just seek after Jesus. And so the remainder of the chapter says, "Do not fear, little flock, for it is your Father's good pleasure; God is happy to give us the kingdom. Sell what you have, give alms, provide yourself money-bags which do not grow old, a treasure in the heavens that does not fail, where no thief approaches nor moth destroys." So don't save everything you have on this earth. Everything you have on this earth, give it to the kingdom of God, because if you do it for God's kingdom, if you're sowing into a ministry, if you are helping different, um, people within the kingdom, you know, the people that are hungry in the streets, or if you're helping someone that's in need that you know, these are the things that you can lay hold of, when God will pay you back when you get to heaven, because that's the motivation. This earth is not the goal, this is not the place that we should be trying to, to, I don't know, become big, great, you know, prosperous people. You wanna be abundant, you wanna have abundant life, and you wanna live according to the word of God and His promises, but understand that the life that we should look toward living towards, because tomorrow's not promised, we need to make sure that the kingdom of God and our place is secure in heaven. And Jesus says in verse 34, "For where your treasure is, there your heart will be also." So if you, if you have a million dollars in the bank account that you never touch, because you're saving that for 2025, God is saying, "That's where your heart is gonna be. You're always gonna think about that money, you're never gonna think about Him, you're never gonna try to go, go do things for Him. All your heart will ever ponder on is whatever you invest into." So if you are investing too much into the things of this world, that's where your heart is gonna be. And if you're investing into the, the kingdom of God and the things of God and Jesus, the Holy Spirit, God, the church, these are the places that you will reap and also there your heart will be. So people will know where your heart is, where you treasure, with whatever you treasure. And so verse 35 all the way down to 48, and this, these, uh, this chapter was very, very heavy as far as, um, understanding the things of God in regard to giving and understanding that when we do have, that we shouldn't just hoard it to ourselves and, you know, do what we wanna do with our money, but that we should do what the will of God is. So verse 35 says, "Let your waste be girded and your lamps burning, and you yourselves be like men who wait for their master, when he will return from the wedding, that when he comes and knocks, they may open to him immediately. Blessed are those servants whom the master, when he comes, will find watching; assuredly I say to you, that he will gird himself and have them sit down to eat, and will come and serve them." So Jesus is saying, "In the meantime, while you're waiting for the kingdom of God to come, what are you doing? Are you waiting with expectancy, with joy, with happiness? Or are we waiting just downtrot, or are we not even waiting at all? Are we just living our life and not even taking note of the things that God wants us to do? Are we just forgetting that He's coming back?" Jesus is saying, "Blessed are those servants whom the master, when he comes, finds; they will be found watching," meaning we're watching, we're waiting, we're looking out, we're looking in the skies to see, is Jesus coming? Is He almost here? Is He coming tomorrow? We don't have to worry about it, but are we preparing ourselves here on this earth for His return? Is what Jesus is asking. And if He should come in the second watch, or come in the third watch and find them, so blessed are those servants. But note this, that if the master of the house had known what hour the thief would come, he would have watched and not allowed his house to be broken into. So if we are not ready, and we're not even waiting, and Jesus comes, then we practically weren't ready. We, we missed out on the opportunity because we weren't waiting. And so Jesus is comparing that to a robber who comes to a home because a person wasn't guarding their house. They weren't waiting, they, they weren't, they were just oblivion. They were not trying to protect themselves or block themselves. What are we not blocking ourselves from that's allowing the enemy to come in and help us? And, excuse me, is distracting us from the second coming of Jesus Christ? Therefore, verse 40, "You also be ready, for the Son of Man is coming at an hour you do not expect." Jesus is coming whether we like it or not, and He's coming at an hour that we don't even know. He's gonna come when we least expect it. He's not gonna come when we think, you know, all of the, the expected mindsets of ours has come to pass. No, He's gonna come, but He's gonna come when we think He's not coming. So we need to be on guard whenever and every day. Peter replied and said, "Lord, do you speak this parable only to us or to all people?" And the Lord said, "Who then is that faithful and wise steward, whom his master will make ruler over his household, to give them their portion of food in due season? Blessed is that servant whom his master will find so doing when he comes; truly I say to you, that he will make him ruler over all that he has. But if that servant says in his heart, 'My master is delaying his coming,' and begins to beat the male and female servants, and to eat and drink and be drunk..." So this is being compared to the fact that, what if we're not, we're in the situations where we're not being good stewards over what God has given us? And so those who do, who are good stewards, and God gives you a talent, He gives you a gift, He tells you what to do, you're, within your calling, and you do it. That person will inherit, God will have so much in store and make that person ruler over everything He has. But the person that says, "Ah, you know, God isn't coming back yet, let me take my time, let me go do this, let me go do that, or let me, let me be rebellious, or let me, you know, I got time to live it up." Um, what's that, YOLO, you only live once attitude? He's saying that the master of that servant will come when he's not looking, at an hour when he didn't expect. And that person will be cut in two and appoint him his portion with the unbelievers. It would be so horrible if we would be classified as an unbeliever. All our lives, we were praying, we were reading our Bible, we were fasting, we were going to church, we weren't a part of ministries, we were doing all these things, but we missed the second coming. And now, because we missed the second coming, now we're being placed within the same category as an unbeliever. That's harsh, for you were believing and you were waiting all that time, and now God has said, "This person is an unbeliever." "And that servant who knew his master's will and did not prepare himself or do according to his will, shall be beaten with many stripes." If we know the will of God and we continue to rebuke it, we don't want it, we throw it away, we just ignore it, that's what will happen. "But he who did not know, yet committed things deserving of stripes, shall be beaten with few." So it's based off of the knowledge and the, the reward. The reward is based off of the knowledge and how the person took the knowledge. And if they didn't know the knowledge, then they'll ju, be judged accordingly to that. "For everyone to whom much is given, from him much will be required; and to him to whom much has been committed, of him they will ask the more." So if God gives us six talents of different things that we're supposed to be doing, He's gonna hold us accountable for all six of those areas that He's given us as a talent or gift. And if He's given us one or two, it'll be based off of that. And so the accountability is much heavier when we, either when we choose to decide to pursue and do what God told us to do. If we don't do it, then we're, we're gonna be held accountable either way. If we don't, if we do, we'll be held accountable, but the consequence will be much difficult if we choose to ignore it. And verses 49 is saying, "I came to send fire on earth, and how I wish it were already kindled." So Jesus is saying, "I came to, to start some trouble on this earth. And already I feel like me being here, I wish I could get rid of it, cuz I, I feel bad." And He's saying, "But I have a baptism to be baptized with, and how distressed I am till it is accomplished. Do you suppose that I came to give peace on earth? I tell you, not at all, but rather division; for from now on, five in one house will be divided, three against two and two against three; father will be divided against son, son against father, mother against daughter, and daughter against mother, mother-in-law against her daughter-in-law, daughter-in-law against her mother-in-law." Jesus is saying here that He has come to cause division in, in this sense. God wants us to have peace with everyone, doesn't matter who you're related to, who you know, He wants us to have peace. But what He's saying is that when it comes to the kingdom of God, God came to divide, because there's gonna be people that believe in God's will for your life, and there's gonna be people that don't. And it's up to you to decide whether or not you wanna follow Jesus Christ, or you wanna follow what men think you should be doing. And that's the division that God is causing. So there's gonna be father and daughter that don't get along, because they don't see eye to eye when it comes to God's will for their lives, or even just in general. So Jesus has come so that He could divide people apart. And, and in the sense where Jesus sometimes tells us to follow Him, well, all the time, when Jesus tells you to follow Him, He's telling you to leave behind family, friends, leaving behind all things to follow Him. And that's why He's causing the division, because He's taking you away from what you've always known, and He wants you to encounter something new in Him. Discerning the time, verses 54 to 56, He also said to the multitudes, "Whenever you see a cloud rising out of the west, and immediately you say, 'A shower is coming,' and so it is; and when you see the south wind blow, you say, 'There will be hot weather,' and there is." What Jesus is about to say here is that we can figure out, we know when we look at the sky and we see that it's gray, we know it's about to rain, we see clouds, we know it's about to rain. When we see too many, we see an overcast, when we see the sun out, when we look at the signs of the times and, and the weather, we know what's about to happen. We can look and see, people look at horoscopes and try to figure out their lives and things like that. But Jesus is saying, "Hypocrites," verse 56, "You can discern the face of the sky and of the earth; how is it you do not discern this time?" Jesus is saying, "I'm on my way, but you don't even know." You're not even trying to discern that. Jesus is saying that, "Are you preparing? Are you, are you even waiting for me? Are we waiting for Christ to come back? Are we discerning the time? Are we seeing that the times are difficult, that there's prophecies being fulfilled every single day? And Jesus is so close to His second coming, but we're so distracted with the things of this earth and the things of this world that we can't discern that Jesus is on His way. They can't, they, and the people that He was addressing at the time was, they could discern everything. There were so many prophecies that were given, but they couldn't even discern that Jesus was at their feet. The Messiah was there, Jesus was in their faith, and they missed Him. Are we gonna miss Jesus when He comes again for the second time? And verses 57 to 59 says, "And yes, and why even of yourselves do you not judge what is right? When you go with your adversary to the magistrate, make every effort along the way to settle with him, lest he drag you to the judge, the judge deliver you to the officer, and the officer throw you into prison. I tell you, you shall not depart from there till you have paid the very last mite." So what Jesus is trying to say is, if we're in a moment where we, God has told us to, to evangelize, to preach the gospel, and we say, "No, that's not for me, I'm not about that life, that's not me. I don't speak, I don't preach." Or He might tell you, um, to start a nonprofit organization. He might tell you to start an organization to help the needy, and you're like, "Uh, nah, I wanna, I'm all about doing my career and trying to advance myself and do this and do this and do that." And God has called us to do different things, maybe He's called you to, you know, start a music ministry, maybe He's caused you to start an art ministry, whatever He's caused you to do. And you continue to fight Him and you rebel against Him, and you say, "I don't wanna do your will, I, I'm sorry." Or even, "I don't wanna hear that, cuz that's not a part of my life, that's not what I do." So Jesus is saying, "When you go with your adversary to the magistrate," so basically whoever you're fighting against, when you go to the judge, make every effort to settle with him. So while you're on the way to be judged, while you're on the way to this kingdom of God, make sure that you're settling with Him, that you have a conversation with Him. The Bible says, "Come and let us reason together. Let's talk about why this is a difficulty for you. Let me give you peace, let me give you the calm that you need in your life, so that you can fulfill what I have for you. Talk with Him," is what He's saying. And He's saying, "Do that lest this adversary that you're fighting against drag you to the judge; the judge deliver you to the officer, and the officer throw you into prison." So make the settlement with Jesus today. Talk with Him, have a conversation with Him, ask Him what His will is. How should you be spending your money? How should you be giving to the kingdom of God? How should be, you be using what you have, your, whatever you have within your possession to help the kingdom of God advance? What is it that we need to be doing to make that happen? Settle with Him, talk with Him. He's urging us to settle with Him now, before it's too late and we lose out on the kingdom of God and we're thrown into a prison. And He says, "I tell you, you shall not depart from there till you have paid the very last mite." God created us with a specific purpose, we have a reason why we're supposed to be living. We are supposed to be doing something. We didn't just, we're not just born here just to live here. Live, go to work, die, and that's life. No, there's a purpose, there's a legacy, there's a destiny on our lives. And just like Jesus had to fulfill His destiny, we have to fulfill ours. So today, I'm praying that we would follow after the kingdom, that we would look out for Jesus, that we would look in the skies, that we would look to see where, where, what can we do now to prepare for the kingdom? And not be selfish, but share it with other people. Tell people, if you need to start a YouTube channel, if you need to get on Instagram, whatever you need to do, do it and let people know that Jesus is coming, because He's coming and He is not tearing, and He will come. And so let's pray right now and ask the Lord to help us to remember that we are His kingdom and He's waiting for us. Father God, we thank you so much for this, uh, this, um, study, this series that you continued to, to speak to us, Lord. The things that we're learning are getting more and more, more hearty and more mean. The things that we're learning are getting more and more, more hearty and more meaty. It's, it's not baby information, Father. And so I'm asking that you give us the strength through your Holy Spirit, that we would be able to remember how to sow into the kingdom, how we can help your kingdom advance. What can we do with our time, our talent and our treasure? What is it that we can do in our day-to-day lives to help the kingdom come? And what is it that we can do to prepare ourselves before you come so that we don't miss out on your eternity that you have for us? Father, we love you and we bless your name, we pray all these things, in Jesus' name we pray, amen. Alright guys, I'm, I'm praying that you have a blessed and a prosperous week. And once again, Happy New Year two thousand and seventeen. And if you wanna give back to this ministry, maybe you wanna sow into Kingdom Roads, where we help the needy, we help the homeless. We help those that are less fortunate, and we wanna coach people and help them to advance in their destiny, to reach their calling, to reach their purpose. If you wanna help this ministry, we ask you to go to kingdomroads.org, go to our support page. And if you'd like to send us an email, email us at kingdomroads@gmail.com. Have a great night, may God be with you.